Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you. Jamie, great to see you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education to order. Meredith, please call the role.
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Polly Bloodworth.
Here.
Jamie Bowling.
Here.
Patrice McCrery, here. Julie Pyle.
Here.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Alyssa Riley.
Here.
Secretary Link.
Jamie Link attending virtually.
Chair, you do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And it's wonderful to see all of you virtually and in person. We've got a delightful, busy meeting today, so let's get started. Including included on today's board agenda is a dedicated public comment segment. This segment is limited to 10 speakers at a maximum of three minutes each. If there are multiple members of an organization, we encourage the membership of that group to select one person to comment. We and we have no one seeking to speak at this time. So I will move us next into internal board business. The summary of minutes for the April 9, 2024 KBE regular meeting, day one, April 9, 2004, KBE State Schools Committee Meeting, April 9, 2024, United We Learn Committee Meeting, and April 10, 2024, KBE Regular Meeting, day two, were distributed in advance. Are there any correction to any corrections to any of these minutes? If there are, may I have a motion for their approval? I move. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Is there further question? I'll call the question then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Thanks so much. The motion carries. Next, we move into our standing committees. Per KBE policy, the KBE chair with the approval of the board shall name members and chairs for all committees. I have asked Julie Powell to join and serve on the KBE Awards Committee, and she has agreed. I will now entertain a motion to approve Julie's appointment to the KBE Awards Committee. May I have such a... Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got lots of seconds. Julie's appointment to the committee has been moved in second. I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thanks so much. The motion carries. Thank you, Julie. And that committee does the...
Best committee ever.
Yeah, it's I hear that. And they give us reason to celebrate. So we want to take good care of that committee. Kentucky is very fortunate to be one of few states to have both an active teacher and current student serve on their state Board of Education. Later in our agenda today, we will have a chance to celebrate the contributions of our current teacher member, Alyssa Riley, and our current student member, RJ Osborne, as they conclude their terms of service at the end of the month. And as has become so apparent to us, our students get really, really busy this time of year and make real good prioritization decisions.
Baseball.
So RJ's playing baseball today. So 701 KAR 5:160 requires that the KBE select a non-voting student and teacher member no later than its last regular meeting of the fiscal year. The selected members will serve a one-year term, which will begin July 1 and conclude June 30, 2025. Following an application period, special committees of the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council and the Commissioner's Teacher Advisory Council were invited to review the applications and identify finalists. The Teacher Advisory Council Special Committee identified three teacher finalists. Unfortunately, due to the student's schedule of this very busy end of school year and end of sports seasons and all of that, the students' last-minute conflicts and schedules prevented a quorum at a meeting that we could convene to get their recommendation. 701 KAR 5:160 states, "If the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council fails to take action to make a recommendation to the board by May 1, within five business days after May 1, the commissioner shall recommend to the board three candidates from the applications for selection as the non-voting student member of the board." Accordingly, our commissioner identified the three finalists for the non-voting student position. The finalist's applications were distributed to members in advance of today's meeting for review and consideration. Based on her review of the identified finalists, Commissioner Kenny recommends the selection of student candidate number 11 and teacher candidate number 8. Please, at this time, I ask for a motion to approve the selection of student candidate number 11 and teacher candidate number 8 to serve as the 2024-2025 non-voting KBE members. May I have such a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I ask if there are any questions or discussion at this time? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and we will have appropriate time to hear from Alyssa and RJ, as a matter of fact, later in the agenda. The next item on the agenda is consideration of our membership renewal in the National Association of State Boards of Education for the upcoming year. In your portal, we've provided a document by NASPI outlining member benefits, and I think we don't have to go far to get other testimonial from board members, myself included, about the various services that have been provided over the term of our our term of office on the KBE Board. And anyone want to speak to that? Julie?
So serving as a new board member representative on the NASPI Board, it's been very beneficial connecting with state board members across the country and also with the conference coming to Louisville in the fall. There's a new member institute in July, which I'll be attending. So I know as a new board member, it's been very, very beneficial.
Well, you raise another important point. I mean, it would be really, really unseemly not to not... Since we're hosting them with our fine Kentucky hospitality.
And what a treat it is that it's coming here and we have opportunity to attend because it's a phenomenal conference. Very well done.
Well, let me ask a motion then, and we'll continue to discuss this. Is there a motion to renew our membership? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further comment regarding our NASPI membership?
I would just add that it is has been an exceptional opportunity for several of us in terms of development, really learning, and then having that national perspective on the work of state boards of education across the country. And so I give them very high i marks for the kind of high-quality professional learning that we're engaged in and the small group opportunities, too. Always virtual, but always very helpful.
The networking goes on, and it it's very, very it's always substantive. And I'm going to say it's always humbling because you get to learn so much from the perspective of others and the things that they're contending with and how they're learning to cope. So...
Even yesterday, Dr. Robinson and I were on a second call with California Board of Ed with Linda Darling Hammond and the vice chair of the California Board, and they reached out to us because they wanted to learn more about Kentucky United We Learn. So again, humbling, but really an exhilarating opportunity to share about the work that we're doing and to have some kind of a national impact as well.
And gratifying.
Yeah. Stars.
So I'll call the questions. All those in favor of renewing our membership, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Great. We'll look forward to hosting NASPI here in Louisville in 2025. Now, the KBE Awards Committee will meet. Members not serving on the committee are welcome to take a break at this time. We are going to ask the committee to meet in this room so that we can continue the live stream. If you're not going to be observing the committee, I'd urge you to take conversations and a break outside of the room. So I would ask the committee chair with the query to please take over.
I can do that. Thank you, Chair Robinson. As the rest of you ease in to your comfort level, if you want to sit in and listen to this discussion, you are more than welcome to do so. This is probably the most uplifting committee on the board because we get to celebrate all of the wonderful experiences in the classroom and building into the classroom from across the Commonwealth. Today, we're meeting to discuss the 2024 Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education. So Meredith, will you do the roll call of our members, please?
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Patrice McCrery.
Here.
Julie Pyle.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Okay, Chair, all members are present.
Thank you very much. Now, the Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education includes the following description. The late Dr. Johnny Grissom served at the KDE in the role of Associate Commissioner for the Office of Special Instructional Services. She provided steadfast commitment, service, and leadership striving to help all students achieve at high levels regardless of their disabilities. This award is given each year to a Kentuckian or a Kentucky organization to honor outstanding dedication to improving student achievement for students with disabilities. The criteria is as follows. Leadership or implementation of innovative practice in curriculum, instruction or assessment that leads to improved learning, post-secondary or workforce outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences, and district or schools demonstrating significant improvement or sustained excellence in learning or behavior outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences. Now, committee members, you were sent to applications, and we did have a good number of applications that were sent our way, and you had the opportunity to peruse those and study those and use our scoring guide that we have available to make this a very even-kiltered decision. Also, much appreciation for all of the redacting from Meredith's team. Thank you very much for that. That also gives us a very clear view of what's happening without having the names and identifying markers there. I will also go ahead and tell you, this is being broadcast, so it is highly just critical that we are careful about the wording we use during this meeting because at all times, everything must be confidential with it. So we'll we'll speak in very broad terms today as we discuss our candidates. I am going to ask you, committee members, if you will give me your top three. You do not even have to give me your score. If you will just give me the numbers of your top three candidates, we're going to see how close we are to consensus on determining who our newest award winner will be. I'm going to jump on with Joanne. Joanne, do you mind sharing your numbers, please?
I will. I have 13 and 14, which were the same candidate.
Correct.
17 and 6 and 12, which were also the same.
Okay, 17, 6, and 12?
Yes, not in that order.
But you've got have you got 17 as second and then 6 and 12 as third? Okay, okay. Just wanted to double check because I knew that 6 and 12 were the same. Yes.
All very close.
All right. Diane, would you share your numbers, please?
Yes, two, number two, 14 and 6.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Two, one, 14, two, six, three.
I still did not get that. So sorry. Can you lean in just a little bit?
Into what?
Oh, the microphone.
No one has ever told me they could not hear me speak.
You found your gender side. Number two is your first candidate.
Two, 14 and 6.
14 and 6. All right, thank you. Lou?
I have 13, 14 for first. And just for those who are listening in, that's the same person was nominated twice.
Yes, yes.
I have 6, 12 for second, and 9 for third.
Okay, we are rolling right along with our numbers right here. I'll go ahead and jump in. Since Julie's our brand-new member, I'm going to let her be the final call on these. But I had 13, 14, 17, and then 6, 12 as well. Julie?
So I had three, 13, 14, and 17.
I missed a few minutes ago.
Okay, I'm glancing at our numbers. 13, 14 has three first-place votes and two second-place votes.
Correct.
I'm going to go to our second-place vote individuals, Julie and Diane. Do you want to speak to your number-one candidates or...
I actually had them tied, so I am good either way.
Okay, okay, great.
My one and two were separated by one point, so I'm okay with...
Yeah, excellent.
And looking back over at the bios, I'm sorry, the recommendations, I'm very comfortable with
Okay.
number two being number one.
All right.
And Madam Chair, I would just add, it's always uncanny for me how close our consensus is when we read out our numbers, and so that has held true again. But as you noted, and as we so often experience, we get exceptional batches of applicants this time. And with 20 applicants, I didn't know what to expect, but we saw it was really affirming to see the kind of great student-centered work that's happening across the field in all of these. So while I'm thrilled with kind of the consensus that we're about to reach, I love the fact that so many of them were represented on our list today.
And very, very quickly, I'll go ahead and slide in this little note to the committee as a whole, based on what you're seeing right there. I think we need to perhaps look at some of the guidelines that we're sending out to give a little bit of clarification in in something that will tie in very closely to what our scoring guide is so that it's easier for the expectations to be met. And that's because I saw a lot of excellence, but because we are true to adhering to our scoring guide and making this as fair as possible, that made a difference throughout this process.
Innovation in particular, perhaps?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Yes. And so maybe a little bit more clarification during the actual application would make a difference. But I will say that obviously, our candidate 13/14 has risen to the top. So with that being said, based on this candidate's demonstrated leadership or implementation of innovative practice in curriculum, instruction or assessment leading to improved learning, post-secondary or workforce outcome for students, learning or behavior differences, I would ask the committee to entertain a motion to approve candidate 13/14 as the recipient of the 2024 Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education. Is there a motion to approve this candidate?
I make the motion. We approve that candidate.
Thank you, Julianne. And second?
Second at motion.
Thank you, Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All opposed? Okay, I think we are ready for this adjournment for our adjournment. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We're moved all over the room. All right, in a second. Okay, thank you, Julie. Any discussion?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for those involved who have helped make this such an easy process. Thank you for the individuals who did apply but were not accepted. It is my hope that then, when this rolls back around, that they will once again apply because there was some stellar sources there. So...
Well, Patrice, as we corral folks back in, thank you. You have been the sweetest of all chairs, and you've been so intentional about hearing our voices in the process, always prepared, always gracious, and it's been really, really fun to work on this committee with you for the last four years.
Oh, thank you. That means a great deal to me.
We're not going to start blubbering now.
It means a great deal to me. Thank you very much. It has been an absolute honor and privilege to stand in this role.
You make it feel that way.
I would second that also. Patrice, you've been a lot of guidance coming on the board new this past year and getting assigned to committee. I did not think that's how this process works, that you've got to go to work, work, work real quick. I would say that you've been very responsive to my questions and leading and guiding and mentoring and coaching. So I appreciate it.
Absolute great experience. And I want the other individuals on the board to understand, there's a lot of upfront work with this. Our committee meeting typically goes very, very fast, but there's literally hours of work that is sometimes involved in this process.
She's already experienced it once, and she agreed to be here.
But it is a joyous opportunity to see what is happening across the Commonwealth because, I mean, we've got some shining stars in this Commonwealth. All right.
Did we vote?
All right. A voice vote on adjourning. We have not voted. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye, please.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you so much. So the KBE Awards Committee has met and has a report to offer. I'd like to call on the committee chair, Ms. McCrery.
Get my paper here.
Okay.
This, we came together, Chair Robinson, to discuss choosing a recipient of the Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education. The late Dr. Johnny Grissom served at the Kentucky Department of Education in the role of Associate Commissioner for the Office of Special Instructional Services. She provided steadfast commitment, service, and leadership striving to help all students achieve at high levels regardless of their disabilities. This award is given each year to a Kentuckian or Kentucky organization to honor outstanding dedication to improving student achievement for students with disabilities. The criteria for the award is, as such, the leadership or implementation of innovative practice in curriculum, instruction or assessment that leads to improved learning, post-secondary or workforce outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences, and district or schools demonstrating significant improvement or sustained excellence in learning or behavior outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences. On behalf of the Awards Committee, I would like to share that the committee determined that candidate 13/14, which is one individual, best met the criteria of the award. Therefore, I would like to move approval of candidate number 13, 14 as the recipient of the Kentucky Board of Education 2024 Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education, and ask the chair for the board's approval to recognize candidate 13, 14 at the board's upcoming August regular meeting.
What a treat. Okay, coming from the committee, a second is not required. The question is before you. All those in favor of approving the committee's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you. Thank you so much, committee. It's this is a special award. Thank... Well, they all are. We just have fun with all of them.
You can say it every time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Our next item is concerns our review items. We have the 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year update, the Commonwealth Education Continuum update, and reflections on our from our non-voting members that we have enjoyed, embraced, and benefited from. So let us let us begin. Kevin. 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year. Kevin Day.
Let's see if it works. Uh-oh. No, okay. All right, that's okay. We'll make two. Hi, my name's Kevin Daly. I'm the 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year, and this is my second time coming before you, the Board of Education. The first time, I explained kind of who I was, and I gave this long introduction. I won't do that this time. Recently, I was with a friend, kind of a mentor, and they told me that whatever it is that got you where you were, where you are, that's what people need to hear. And so I'm kind of I've taken that to heart. That's I like quotes. Quotes just like rock my world. And that's one that I've ruminated over for a long time. And so I'm just going to be who I am. And who I am is a grateful, grateful person. I'm a teacher. I'm a husband. I'm all of these other things. But at the core of it, I'm so grateful to be where I am and to be in this position. So my first, like, little bit of gratitude, I would like to give to the KDE Communications Team. They have been incredible in supporting me in this effort. I am not I have very feisty opinions, and they will be the first ones to tell you that. But they're always with an acknowledgement that I want to do what is absolutely best, not only for students but for teachers and for public education. That's my goal. And if that means that I have to be the one to speak up, then I will. If it means that I have to be the one to stick their neck out, then I will. And so I really, really appreciate all of them for their help and their guidance and their support. So I want to thank them first. I want to thank you guys for supporting the Teacher of the Year program as well. And I'll jump right in. So I mentioned that I'm a grateful person, and I'm grateful for public education for so many reasons, and I've spoken a lot about them. And so as Teacher of the Year, I have wanted most to celebrate teachers because teachers are the cornerstone of public education. Public school teachers are the ones who do who do the work. Next slide. It's so weird saying next slide, you know? I don't know. Okay, normally, I just click it. So my primary goal from being announced all the way through has been to promote public school teachers, and I've tried to find as many ways to do that as possible. Every time you hear me speak, every time you've seen something I've written, it has always been leaning towards promoting other teachers because that is what my role as Teacher of the Year is, is to serve those teachers and students in Kentucky. And so I've done it in a lot of ways. So I just want to go through a couple of those. And the first and biggest is through the Teacher of the Year Project. Excellent. That's one that every Teacher of the Year kind of gets to decide what it is that they want to do. They get supported, and it has been crazy how much... want to do. They get supported, and it has been crazy how much I've been supported in this process. Ah, I'm just in the wrong part of the room. So the Teacher of the Year Project that I chose was, is titled "The Imperfect Classroom." My thought is that all of the best classrooms we've ever been in are classrooms where the teacher is fully themselves, because teachers are the magic of a classroom. It is not curriculum. It is not any of those scientific principles that we all learn about in our teacher ed programs. It's not behavior management. Those things matter, but it's the teacher that matters most in providing an education. Research supports that. Hattie's research says that an effective teacher is the biggest variable in a positive outcome for students. And so if we want to support students, we have to support teachers and who they are as individuals. You know, I've always had this idea that I wanted to be perfect as a teacher, and I realized I can't be perfect as a teacher. I can't do all of the things that are required to be perfect as a teacher, but I can be perfectly myself. And that creates, that comes with all the imperfections that we all have, but it creates a classroom that is like no other. So my plan was to locate other teachers around the state and celebrate them. And I feel like I've done that. Oh, yours works. I just needed to sit in the other seat. Yeah, there we go. So here are the teachers' classrooms that I visited. I put, I know it's impossible to see and to read. I hope you have a copy of this, or you can take a second to look at all of these. Each one of these comes along with a story about what makes that classroom special. I went to their classroom. I looked at a recommendation from a colleague, a parent, a student, a former student. I interviewed the teacher themselves. I interviewed students. And most importantly, I got to feel what it was like to be in their space, to feel what the students feel when they walk into those rooms. And my God, was it incredible. It was amazing. And it was wildly different in every single place. In all corners of Kentucky, in all types of classrooms, these teachers brought magic to their students, and it was awesome. I hope you take a moment to at least read one or two of these to see the incredible stuff. They're posted through KDE and other outlets as well. I've received over 100 teacher recommendations from all grade levels, K through 12. I visited a, from just about every type of classroom you could imagine, whether it's a CTE classroom, a special education classroom, a unit classroom, all of the disciplines, all of the electives, pretty awesome. Sixty-three school districts were represented, and 51 counties were represented, and that's what this map shows. I was only able to visit 20 classrooms. There's, that's a lot of work, you know, visiting all of these places. But my work isn't over. This is the halfway point. And so I'm really excited to continue this journey and to make sure all of those 100-plus teachers and any other teachers that are recommended for this are given their flowers, because they deserve them. This is what I learned. Teachers, you cannot do everything all of the time. I've known this for some time, but I never really knew it. I knew it, but I didn't apply it. You can't do everything. What you can do is you can be yourself, and you can be your full, authentic self, because that is what's going to serve you and your students the best. If I try to be someone I'm not, I'm going to burn out and I'm going to leave. It's not going to be enjoyable. It's not going to be the thing that it needs to be, not for myself, not for my colleagues, not for my community, and definitely not for my students. Administrators, classrooms, and by extension, students, are going to have the most successful outcome when their teachers are trusted as professionals and they're valued for what they bring to the table. Not what we want them to bring, but what they bring. Yes, we have to make sure that they have top-notch academic knowledge and pedagogy and all of those other things, but they have to be given the space and the trust to be themselves. That is what all of those 100-plus teachers had in common, is that they were given that space to be who they are. Community members, this might be the most important thing. Incredible things are happening in your child's school. They're just all over the place. I went to little old Owlsley County. I went to Johnson County. I've gone to big schools, little schools, big districts, little districts, and every single one of them, there are incredible things that nobody would know about unless you went looking. Your child is being loved by countless people and supported by countless people. Right now, those people need your support. They need your support to, for funding. They need your support in helping educate their kids. The project has been amazing. It's been like a dream to be able to come up with an idea and to see it out and to make it a reality, something that didn't exist before. But I've done a lot of other things where I've tried to advocate for teachers as well. I've met with different people in KDE to learn from them about what they do to support public education and for them to get a teacher's view of what we do to support our students and to support our schools. It's been very insightful and making those connections with those people, I think, might be one of the longest-lasting legacies of this Teacher of the Year program. I've gone to several different speaking engagements. I'm not going to read them to you. I have them listed up there. I've spoken to students, teachers, community members, organizations. The, speaking to students is definitely the scariest thing. There's like way, so much pressure, which is weird, because I do it every day as a teacher, but being a person that speaks to students is such a gift, and being able to do that has been incredible. I've gotten to advocate at the local, state, and national level for Kentucky schools. And one of the things that I've learned, I think maybe the biggest thing I learned about advocacy and education, is that it doesn't all look the same. My brand of advocacy is not to go out and to fight and to protest and to hold up a sign, but that, we need those people too. My brand of advocacy is to celebrate what's happening, to lean into the good, to find it, and to make sure everybody knows about it, and to be grateful and show gratitude for the work that's being done. And so in that, I've spoken to congresspeople. I've spoken to governors. I've spoken to the Secretary of Education for the United States of America. I got to speak to the First Lady about how amazing Kentucky schools are. And I've said it before, and I'll say it a million times again, if you give a well-funded Kentucky school and a set of Kentucky students, I would put them up against anybody in the world in any version of success that you might find. But we need to do those things too. I've also gotten to do a lot of professional learning that has been out of reach for so many people in so many spaces. I got to go to Google and get to see the next wave of AI and how it's going to impact teaching and education and students, the workforce, all of those things. I've gotten to learn about early literacy, which is not something I'm familiar with as much as a high school teacher, middle school teacher. So that's been really incredible. And I've learned about different practices for mental well-being for teachers and for students and how to support them, and that's been pretty great too. Maybe the capstone of all of this, other than Friday, on Friday, I get to go speak at my high school and give the commencement address for my former high school, which to me is like the biggest thing. I've been so nervous about that. But maybe the other capstone of this has been the first-ever state dinner honoring teachers at the White House. Dr. Jill Biden, the First Lady of the United States, invited all of the teachers of the year to come to the White House to have dinner and to be in a room with people who often don't get to hear from teachers in their states and in the territories. And oh my God, it was incredible. I could talk about it forever. I won't because, but I got to stand, the large picture on the right there is my favorite picture. That's where FDR gave his fireside chats. So maybe one of the most pivotal moments in American political, American political history. And I got to stand there and just like hang out, and that was unbelievable. What I can tell you after this, these months of being the Kentucky State Teacher of the Year, traveling all over the state, meeting with teachers from all over the country, and meeting with students from all over the country, is that teachers in Kentucky are inspired, and they are doing incredible work. But they are also tired. They are being asked to do a lot, and you can't keep asking and asking and asking without giving. Teachers in Kentucky are innovative. They are doing some of the craziest stuff with AI, with deeper learning practices, with all of these initiatives that are research-based, and it is impressive to watch. But they are inundated with a lot of other stuff, and they need help. Teachers are encouraged about the future of education, about the future of public schools. The teachers in our schools today, while they have a lot to struggle with and a lot to fight for, they know what public education is and why it's so important. But man, they're exhausted, and they need help. And most importantly, and I think we all in this room know this, and hopefully everyone listening knows, teachers in Kentucky are necessary. They're necessary for the workforce. They're necessary for infrastructure. They're necessary for any political thing that you may vote for. If you do not vote for public schools first, I doubt success in any of the other areas will follow. Thank you guys for this opportunity and your ongoing support of Kentucky public schools. I appreciate it.
So Kevin, this is so very provocative. I hope you know you have, you've just opened a Pandora's Box and promoted, prompted a lot of curiosity about, I'm going to phrase it this way. Do, do we have a hope of ever inventorying the resource that we have in our teachers in terms of expertise that they have, the things that they are really passionate about, that is a source of energy for them, that they bring? Because I, I have a feeling that we are not yet using it in an intentional way as an aspect of a human resource deployment plan. We put teachers in assignments almost kind of like they're fungible even. And so we might have the expertise that's needed over here right next door, but there's no way of knowing. So I guess that's my way of asking, can you help teachers really understand how important their sources of energy and their knowledge and expertise really is so that we can make it something we need to count? We need to have a big book that has, we've got a teacher in this county who really is good at community relations, and we need that service in this school. So, you know, it's just a matter of getting into the pool of our assets to answer some of our, answer some of my questions. I didn't mean to make a speech.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I have two, I have two things. One of them might be more provocative or controversial than the other. So the first thing is, I was talking to Byron Darnell this morning. I just popped into his office to say, hey, he's always been super welcoming when I've been here, and he's a fun guy to talk to. And so I popped into his office, and we were talking about education, and we were talking about this experience. And I made the comment to him that I think applies really well. My core, my focus, and the focus in education is always about the students. It's not about the systems. It's not about the plans. It's about the students. The systems help us get there, and the plans help us get there, and the inventorying, that'll all help us, help us get there. But at the end of the day, it's about the students. And so we need to talk to the students about what the skills and strengths are. We need their input, and we need to talk to other teachers. You come to Ballyshannon Middle School, I could tell you who's good at a lot of things, because I go to their classrooms on my planning period, because my principal has given me time throughout the day, and a lot of that so that I get to know them. And there are a lot of ways to do that, and I think that has to be handled at each school. That's been what "The Imperfect Classroom" is about. It's identifying and tapping into that, so that people know that there are experts in these things all around them. I hope that this is something that catches on, that people understand that if you celebrate others, it elevates all of us. If I can celebrate one teacher in Owlsley County, I can celebrate an entire county. I can elevate all of the teachers so that they know that that's possible for them, and they know that they have their own version of an imperfect classroom if they're able to tap into it.
Thank you. Kevin will wrap up his ambassadorship here at KDE at the end of June, and then he'll be heading back into the classroom this fall, and he will conclude his year of service at the end of June, or December, excuse me. Thank you.
Wow. Please, Kevin, stay in touch. And we have a way of reaching out and touching you even after you're gone, so.
Look, I am the Kentucky Teacher of the Year for 2024, and one of the, one of the coolest things ever is that for the rest of my life, I am the 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year. So reach out to me. I am here. And that doesn't just go for members of the board. That is for any, if there is any way that I can speak on behalf or in support of public schools in Kentucky, that is my mission. Not to extend this any longer, but I live in northern Kentucky, right on the border, and this is a border situation. I can drive five minutes from my home and make $30,000 more a year. I don't do that because I love Kentucky, because I love what Kentucky public schools have given to me and what they've given to my family. We need to make sure that that's not the only thing that Kentucky public school teachers are relying on, because unfortunately, you got to pay the bills too. So that'll be my last thing. Sorry.
Kevin Daly, 2024 Teacher of the Year. Yes, very, very hopeful, yeah. Our next review item is a report from KBE member Diane Woods, who's going to bring us an update on the Commonwealth Education Continuum. As Board Chair, I have an opportunity to be, participate in the Commonwealth Continuum along with our commissioner. In this instance, I asked Diane to serve as my representative. And I felt that, as I've looked at the feedback from meetings, I felt it important to make room on our agenda to bring awareness of the continuum to the entire board. Diane?
Okay, Chair Robinson, thank you for this opportunity. Get my microphone. To serve the great Commonwealth of Kentucky. And when we were talking about NSPI earlier, Lou and I both serve on the Principal Collaborative for NSPI. And the respect that the colleagues around the nation have for Kentucky, and looking at what some of the things we're doing, it's really very exciting. I hope we will, in my opinion, that we need to do more sharing and tooting our own horn of what we're, what's happening with our own. So one of the things, the opportunity, the Commonwealth, Commonwealth, not just large district, small district, yada, yada, it's a whole Commonwealth, Education Continuum. And that continuum is, is a word that's, we're hearing a lot of lately. What we're doing from the cradle to graduation, it's cradle to career, are phrases that I continue to hear. And I go to a public library quite often and see the Dolly Parton cutout and know what they're doing. So it truly is, we're putting our mouth and our actions where they need to be, cradle to career, and that's what they were talking about. So the continuum is, has been a delightful opportunity to serve, to get to know some people across the nation. If you will follow the slide deck, that will help. The first thing there, okay, so what is the mission of the continuum? And I'm going to highlight some things from the phrase, and you'll have it in the KSBA portal. So if you want to go back and read it, read more, or if you'd like me to come and do a tutorial about it with you, I'd be glad to do that, because this is very interesting and very much needed. And hopefully at the end of my brief presentation, that will be your thought too, that yes, it was not a waste of our time to listen to this. Okay. The Commonwealth Education Continuum, which we will call CEC from this point forward, strengthens Kentucky's education pipeline, strengthens that pipeline. It's imperative for students to have access and opportunity to earn degrees and credentials that lead to sustainable competitive wage careers. And this really hit home with me, about a few weeks ago, I was in the Dollar Tree, which is one of my favorite stores to shop in, because there's always some good deals there. Some of it may be stale, but it's okay. But this gentleman was ahead of me, and he had been working, he worked for a landscaping firm there in Lexington. And I got to talking to him, because I'm always, you know, I saw his shirt that he had on, and I said, oh, you, you work at blank, blank. I've had them at my house before. And he said, yes. And I said, are you native Lexingtonian Fayette County schools? And he said, yes. And he said, what he was doing, and I said, he said, you know, I would really like to go back and get some more education and become a manager. Because I said, you know, you've got the quality. It looks like to me that you would be a great manager of people. We talked for a long time. He said, but I cannot. I have a family now. So I went to the tech school for So I went to the tech school for a while and then I had to drop out. And that just broke my heart to just someone that has this potential. So I thought if we had had, if there'd been something in place, like the continuum, that follows students that do have a potential, they may not have the finances, they may not even have, know what they want to do, but to keep them in the pipeline to educate them. And that's where the pathways are so exciting. I went over to Harrison County where I graduated from and got a stack of their pathways. And she had them on a ring. And it was like, you know, we're flipping through all this. And I was like, oh my God. And what was so exciting about the pathways is I looked through them, I thought, God, I could have done that, or I could have been here, I could have done that. I don't think so. I think that ship has sailed. But we were, they use people from the community or people that had been in the school system as a face on these pathways. So I passed them on to one of my cousins because her daughter is getting ready to go into high school. I said, you all need to take a look at this. And it was, she was like, you mean she could do this and do that? So we've got a wealth of stuff. We just need to continue to work on it. So that's kind of the mission, competitive wage groups. Now, turn, oh, slide deck number three is the different work groups. The continuum, continuum is very well organized. And there's work groups and we got to volunteer to, to be in the work group that we wanted to be in. Group number one was affordability of post-secondary education. Group number two, post-secondary advising. Group three, competency framework. And group number four is educator workforce. Now me being me, I thought, well, I really struggled getting into college because my family did not have the money to send me. So I said, that's where I want to be because I want anybody that wants to go do post-secondary to be able to go. So I want to be in group number one. And so as I looked more and more, and in fact, I sent the lady for group number four. As we got to talking more and more about the teacher shortage and the educator workforce. And remembering in my days as school principal, trying to find the right teacher, the one that would fit with my students. I thought, I said, I hate to ask you this, but can I change to group four? And I really apologized. And she said, sure. And I, and copied Chair Robinson. And I could hear her thinking, oh Lord, what have I done?
We're thinking you volunteered for all four.
I just want to say, I just want to let her know that, see, if you would have stayed in group one, they wouldn't have called me. I am actually on group number one.
Good. Very good. They couldn't have selected a better person. I am excited about that. I don't feel like I let them down.
I got an email the other day, so thank you.
Okay, now, as any good group does, any, any project, any, any work that has to be done, we have to have some, an overview, a framework. So looking at the next slide deck, each one of the work groups follows the same framework, the same protocol as they begin the work. First, identifying the challenge, the what? What's going on here? Guiding questions. And this is so key. I think there's a lot of times we forget this. How to address the challenge, the questions from the group as well as from other stakeholders that you know. The looking good on down there and developing a set of guiding questions, identify the proposed outcomes, which lead to the initial recommendations. So it becomes a real clear path to looking at the issue and what we want to, kind of like having the, what's going to happen at the end in mind as, as you begin your work. And look, the proposed outcomes, initial recommendations and a strategic plan. Each one of the work groups, their work is guided by this framework. So again, very concise, very inclusive, and everybody's kind of on the same page, doing it the same way. Getting different results based upon whatever your work group was. Okay, next slide deck please ma'am, thank you. Okay, and I want to briefly just kind of talk about each one of the work groups. Dr. Poe, if I mess up, you can help me here.
No.
Because I'm just going to very briefly put in what was said. The affordability of post-secondary education work group. We need to really keep in mind the whole purpose of the continuum. It's not for us as a public school, get them to 12th grade and see you later. But are what are the continuum, are we having conversations prior to any of these students enrolling in whatever field that they choose to go in? So the recommendations and their recommendations there is they wanted a more focused, universal approach to education and support surrounding affordability. Their strategic plan is to create a seven-year support plan to help students from senior year of high school until one year post-secondary, that bridge. College graduate and to guide and support them from the financial aid application through beginning loan repayment. So there's some where they're getting information that is accurate all the way through from post, from high school, 12th grade through the, the first year of loan repayment, if there's a loan to be repaid. Okay, stop me at any time if you have any questions or any additional information.
So Randy, did you say you're on number one?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Because in my personal opinion, senior year is too late for this. As far as affordability, as families, you need to be planning way before senior year.
Yeah, this isn't, this doesn't preclude. In fact, I know when I was on the continuum, we talked a lot about the middle school, how important it was to get to middle school for early advising. I think this one's specifically about finance through KIA. So once they are established in KIA through the KEES scholarship, then they have the student identifying information forward to follow.
Yeah.
But then also, but the kids need to know going into freshman year, the third grade affect their KEES.
Yeah. And there are guidance counselors on this, lots of secondary people, middle school. And I think even some have reached down into the fifth grade, some school districts.
It was a work group, the first round of continuum that targeted specifically that group.
Okay, group number two is the advising work group. And their recommendation there, leverage and elevating college and career advising through KAAAS's resources. KAA is a Kentucky Advising Academy. It provides free comprehensive series of professional learning and resources for school communities, friskies and other education professionals. So we've got those all involved as well as opportunities to contact, for contact, excuse me, connection with higher education and post-secondary. So again, the continuum, we're talking with public schools, P-12, as well as post-secondary. And as I say, schools, that this may be also any kind of technical career that they may be going into. The competency framework is work group number three. And it is looking at aligning the outcomes for P-12 competencies with post-secondary essential skills. And to me, this is one, this is vital. That has to happen if the work that we're going to do is going to be successful and be impactful. That we've got to have that alignment. That can be shared with stakeholders to ensure student success and enhance the value of Kentucky's education system. Remembering all stakeholders, not just the people that are actually in the schools or in post-secondary, but there are stakeholders in the community, their parents, et cetera, bringing them all to the table. And that's the beauty of this, the whole big continuum as it meets all these stakeholders at their table. And you get to hear a lot of good information about them. Group number four, which is my, one that I've been working on, which I am passionate about schools and being, working in schools all my life. And before I even began working in schools, we would have, in our community, there weren't a lot of places you could go and back in the dark ages to have fun. Or there was no, what do you call those places? Go to bouncy houses and all that. So we play school and guess who got to be the teacher? It's always been good. So you know, we're, we're looking, Danielle Pickens, Chief Program Officer of USHCA is outstanding. And it's, you should just, all our meetings are on Zoom. We meet once a month. Just check it out sometime. I think you'd be very impressed. Anybody would. But the, the things that we're coming up with is the solving teacher shortages and hard to fill subjects. None of this will be new to probably anybody in this room. Equitable access to great teachers, working conditions and teacher retention. Looking at the mastery of 21st century skills. All those are things that are permeating around the work that we're doing. And our guiding questions, in what areas of the K-12 workforce will we focus? We were not interested, we're not very interested in going very broad. But how can we leverage what, what we have, the information we have, what we need, know the need is, to make the biggest impact? The links to the CEC mission, always going back to the mission of why are we here and doing this work? How might we incorporate the voices of the key stakeholders in our focus areas? That's a question that we are looking at now and coming up with some responses. What's our best approach for sharing our work and learnings to accelerate change? And we have so much information here at the department, in the districts. But how do we just make sure that that word gets out there? And thinking back a few years ago, when I was actually in a school working, I don't know that we were doing a very good job of that at that time. So just getting that sharing piece is, is important. When we put it all together, just think of the great things that we can do for kids. And then the proposed outcomes, select one area focusing K-12 workforce where we can make an impact together. We've talked a lot about in this, about the principals, the law of the lid and the principal shortage and getting good principals in place, who then in turn get good teachers in place, who in turn are, are very supportive. We talked about the Impact Working Conditions Survey as one of the catalysts, one of the ways of looking at what's happening and how it's impacting education, what we can do. And how we identify and accelerate action in individual stakeholder organizations like the NAACP, YMCA Black Achievers. There are many organizations that are actively involved in looking at ways to enhance the education of young people. And building a framework, Practical Twos, our advocacy, advocacy action plan to be shared broadly with P-12 and post-secondary stakeholders. Okay, so any, any questions or thoughts on that and from anyone? And I feel like I'm rambling, so if I have, just forgive me because I'm very passionate about this. Having grandchildren and hopefully no great, great grandchildren or anything like that. You want to, want the best education for them. And I know it was a struggle for me. Okay, now we've got this, the last slide on the slide deck deals with the Kentucky Graduate Profile's 10 Essential Skills, which I was not aware of, but that doesn't mean anything. And this, let me give you the background for this. This was done by post-secondary. And it was done because it says nearly three in four employers say they have a hard time finding recent college grads with the essential soft skills, and they call them soft skills, to succeed in the workplace. And they got the head knowledge, but they don't know, they don't have not been trained in how we work with people. How we get every, it's a team. There's no I in team. And getting everybody on the same, the same page. So as a response to this need, Kentucky Public Higher Education is developing the Kentucky Graduate Profile. Now, what is the profile? The profile is a set of career-focused learning outcomes each graduate should demonstrate as part of their college curricula. 10 essential skills identified by higher education organizations and workforce professionals. Again, that continuum, that working involving all stakeholders. The workforce, workforce said, this is what we need. And the college said, we got you babe. We can take care of this. As learning outcomes, all graduates need to succeed, need for success in their chosen field of study. And they are listed there, communicate, communicate effectively. Critical thinking. Does it sound familiar? Apply quantitative reasoning skills to analyze and solve numerical problems. Interact, interact effectively with people from diverse backgrounds. Adapt to changing circumstances while leading and supporting others. Perform professionally within their chosen field or study or occupation. Engage in civic life to improve society. Collaborate and work in teams, teamwork. Apply academic knowledge, skills and abilities to their chosen career, application of knowledge. Use information for decision-making. All these, what they call soft skills of, of learning how to, that are necessary if they're going to be successful. And I had the privilege of being at Skills USA yesterday and judging the FFA contest. One of the, their contests there. And to see all these kids walking around and just talking and having a good time, but still being very professional about their organization that they belong to. And the pride and the, you know, the, the girls had on beautiful little skirts and the FFA jackets.
Blue corduroy.
Blue, it was, it was, it's marvelous. And they're, they're talking about how they were, they talked to us about how FFA had impacted them as individuals. And it wasn't anything about any of the curriculum that, you know, we learned how to feed 300 hogs in a minute. Or we learned about, you know, anything with drones watering our crops. That wasn't how it impacted. They were talking about the friendships that they made and the caring from the teacher that they had. Again, putting that on the graduate profile. Because we do that, I think we do a really good job of that, P-12. And then by the time you get to, to college, you know, are we still more focused or not on the curriculum? And you know, the content. So that was very, very, very affirming of the work that we're trying to do at our level. And the numerous opportunities for us to network with individuals who care about the same thing. Because you know, we're talking about their livelihood. If they go get employed at a certain place and they don't, can't get along with the boss.
Right.
You know, guess what? You know, so that is my presentation update. Any questions or thoughts?
Please.
Thank you for.
Diane, thanks so much for the, for catching everybody up on the work and especially for ending with the grad profile. You've heard, Erin's not on today, I don't think, but Erin's been talking with us all along saying, we're doing the same thing. We're doing kind of commensurate work at CPE. And so just a few months ago, at my team at the University of Kentucky College of Ed, we were asked to review the 10 essential skills for the CPE graduate profile. So all higher ed, public higher ed institutions in Kentucky now have been charged with operationalizing around, what does this look like in the core for all undergraduate degree programs at the university? I teach grad students, so it's not impacting us yet. But the undergrad program, Lee, is all gearing up around what this means and how they will be able to demonstrate these 10 competencies across the core for all Kentucky, a public college and university graduates. So it's, I, I love the fact that we have this tandem operationalizing of the essential skills and competencies happening in P-12 and higher ed. And that's what the continuum is all about. So real point of celebration.
Chair, I have just a really brief comment. That's okay. First of all, I've always thought that education is filled with silos and that's an obstacle. And to, every day it appears that we've discovered that's a major issue for us. And this is a shining example of how those silos are being knocked down and, and those pathways are being opened up. And I'm also proud to say that this board has always been supportive of knocking those silos down and opening up the avenues of learning in a, in a wide way. So thank you to those of you who are serving on this. And as a side note, I would love to see a five or six-year-old Diane Woods teacher. I think I've had you in my classroom.
Probably. There's always one in every group.
Robin, you've been participating in these meetings.
I have, and it is a very exciting, I know that we've tried this before.
Right, P-20.
P-20, we've tried this before. I just, this time it feels a little different, at least. I just, this time it feels a little different, at least from my personal perspective, that, you know, the right people are at the table, we have decision-makers, people that really can advocate and go back to their respective agencies and influence that discussion. So I really appreciate the board members that are participating. And I'm very encouraged that this group reached these four work groups in a very collaborative process. And, you know, it wasn't like CPE saying to us, "Well, we don't think that's a really important issue, that only affects you." So when we see like the workforce piece, that group is tasked with P-12. It's looking at P-12 recruitment and retention, but that does impact post-secondary and on to the career. So I like to think that people have come in a very collaborative spirit to really accomplish some things. The other thing that I will say, I see as the work groups, all these issues, these four work groups, the task is really big for each one of them. And so I appreciate that they are trying to laser in on one or two things that we can show success from, because, you know, sometimes we get into this place where we talk about it a lot, and then it's hard for us to actually effectuate change and make something happen. So I think these work groups have really come in with the mindset that they're going to pick one or two things and really try to make a difference and accomplish something. So it's been a pleasure to participate in it.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Todd?
I served on the Higher Education CEO Board for 10 years, where you had the CEOs of some large corporations and presidents of large universities. And we were talking about profiles, this is some time ago, and the head of one of the largest aerospace companies in charge of hiring and firing people, he said, "You know, I don't think I've ever fired an engineer because they couldn't do engineering. I've hired plenty of them because they can't get along with people. They can't follow instructions, they can't solve problems collectively and so forth." Then he looked up at the sitting and goes, "You know, I think this thing we should call the soft skills are really the harder skills. So universities, y'all aren't doing a very good job with those." And so that was 10 years ago. But it is critical, and it's not easy. This is not easy to do. I made a list of vocabulary disconnects between CEOs and universities. One of them was time. Universities think about seven years for 10-year, four years for a degree. CEOs think about just-in-time inventory. Get it in the door, get it out of the product. And there are, there is, I'll have to look that list up, but there are just total vocabulary differences, and it's the same at every gap between middle school, high school, high school, college, college, and there are gaps in those. Nobody owns the gaps. And this at least approaches the gaps that the P-20 didn't quite get to approach, but I really applaud this, and it's not easy. And the best thing for students to do is get internships and get out there and see what the demands are, what the expectations are when they go out. Universities and companies don't have time now to educate the people they hire. They want to come in ready to hit the ground, and something like this starts focusing on those things that are needed. So I really applaud this.
I would add too that there was some intentionality. Meredith worked with Amanda and others early on to kind of cross-pollinate from Kentucky United We Learned to the Commonwealth Education Continuum. They were both kind of born at the same time, and there's been a nice symbiosis there too, which I think, I bring that up only because of Lee's comment, I think it does address those gaps. We've got to have so much common understanding of one another's challenges as we work through those in order to come up with the very best solutions. Think about educator workforce, the example that Diane gave, or Robin, maybe you made the comment, whatever we're doing in P-12 to develop the workforce is essentially developing the higher ed workforce at the same time, so.
Well, there's so much symbiosis, and particularly, it concerns me that we are still finding too many bumps in creating that pipeline for our ed prep candidates and the clinical experience. So I really am urging that we kind of put a pin in that, because, I mean, we've got symbiosis going on, and it's financial and it is essential to a community and our well-being as a democracy, I would contend. We are providing candidates for these jobs in education that need structured development throughout their career, and the only way to have that structured, authentic development is in an authentic setting that has a good mentorship and clinical advisor attached to it. The, and, you know, other professions have really embraced this with, it seems to me, with more ease than we have. We talk about the differences in the calendar and when people go to work, and all of these artificial barriers that, you know, well, we got a function that needs doing here. Let's figure it out by both institutions or agencies, figuring out how we can structure it to get done, what we must get done. So I really am glad we've got this forum and because we see it as owning both and. That is the thing that is a huge step in the right direction. Another really very provocative issue that can be solved, we just have to find the right partners and initiatives and get it, get the ball rolling.
We know what to do, and we have the will to do it.
Yes, yes.
I might say one more thing. I think that the emphasis on CTE right now gets to this more so than the emphasis on four-year degree type situations. I'm regretting the way saying that, because I think we cannot lose fact that we've got to keep the fundamental educational blocks in place before we try to push people out the door so they put something together for other people. I've said it too many times, but we've got, but when you watch the kids that were downstairs the other day, they're working in groups. They're solving problems collectively. They're getting rewarded for that. They're communicating far better than I think they had before the CTE programs were in place. I know Arrendy's got the group that are up there in the Ignite Program that are getting the very fundamentals as well as the CTE experience. So you don't want to neglect one that focuses too much on the other. There's this magnetism of all the companies coming and wanting the workers to come out and fill the jobs. We can't over, we can't miss that opportunity, but we don't need to go so far in that direction we forget to get the fundamentals to the kids who can have the new ideas, so.
Right.
I saw a lot of excitement in that room down there with the way these kids are communicating, working together, which used to not happen that much.
Once again, exposure to our students keeps us really alert and enlightened and I think highly motivated. Thank you, Diane. Please.
I don't know if Commissioner Link has anything he wants to say about this.
Oh, thank you.
Would love to hear his thoughts.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you. Obviously, our focus is on getting young people moving toward either their post-secondary career, as I've mentioned before, their work career, or some hybrid of the two, working and learning at the same time. And obviously, the demand is extraordinary in Kentucky right now. And as a matter of fact, Secretary Jeff Knoll and I met with the governor about 10 days ago. Secretary Knoll's with the Cabinet for Economic Development, and the governor wanted to stress the importance of this topic about how do we engage young people, because they are the primary workers of the future, along with our efforts in veteran employment and second chance employment and whatnot. So I think this is really, from my perspective, the issue of our time here in Kentucky, because the economic development that's been taking place and the opportunities that are now available, I think getting these young people on a good career trajectory is going to be critical. And this board and everyone at KDE, along with our other workforce partners, are now working in close collaboration with one another to address this issue, along with major employers in the Commonwealth. That work has always been taking place, but it's been a bit disjointed, respectfully. And what we're trying to do is bring all of these partners together to work in a more collaborative and cohesive manner to address this in partnership with one another. So I really appreciate the board's attention to this.
Thank you, Secretary Lee. We've had just probably a treasure trove of well-intended initiatives, each and every one its own distinct effort, and always it's not nearly enough, and we've got to link our efforts and leverage and figure out how we can get some getting to done, counting our achievements. Jamie, are you indicating any interest in commenting? No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. We're happy to have you. Please feel free to let us know, chime in. Diane, thank you so much for organizing this presentation, and I'll thank other KBE members serving on the continuum. Let's keep each other informed going forward. I'm now going to call on Alyssa Riley first to bring some reflections, share some reflections regarding her membership on the board, and for us to share some reflections with you.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Tomorrow will be a year since I was a special guest of the board and was introduced, so it's been fun reflecting on that the last couple of days. So I will preface this that I am a crier, so, and I hear my dad laughing because he knows. So I will, so I will try to get through this the best that I can, so. But my favorite musical is Wicked, and my favorite song from this moving story of the origins of the wicked witch of the West is For Good. It is described in the song that people come into our lives for a specific purpose, and not only do those individuals change us for the better, but they change us for good. I can relate this song to my experience over the last year serving on the Kentucky Board of Education. I've not just been changed for the better, but I have been changed for good. For the last year, I've been changed by the individuals that sit in the seats around me. It is never far from my mind that the experience that each of you bring to this table is far superior than what I have brought. But I've always been made to feel like an equal and have always felt that you've listened to my voice and my perspective. Thank you to the members of the board, the passion you have for public education, innovation, and the students and teachers of the Commonwealth shines. Keep advocating for the work that has been done and what is to come. I cannot wait to see what the future holds for public education in Kentucky, and I know that with each of you providing your input and expertise, it will be something spectacular. To everyone at the Kentucky Department of Education that I've interacted with in the last year, from Stacy Ball's first phone call telling me that I've been selected to be on the board, to Ms. Robin Kenny leading KDE through this school year, each of you have had your hand in the success of the public education system in Kentucky. Your work here does not go unnoticed. The initiatives, the programs, and the way that this department is thinking outside of the box for public education is something to be commended. Thank you for changing the landscape of education in Kentucky for good. To the teachers of this great Commonwealth, there are not enough thank yous in the world for the work that you do on a daily basis. The hearts you touch, the minds that you enrich are changed for good. I know there are tough days, but what is wonderful about the profession of teaching is that those moments where you see a student succeed makes up for the hard times. To the more than 42,000 public school teachers in Kentucky, it has been an honor to represent each of you throughout this past year. Please know that this board and the individuals at KDE have your best interests at heart and will continue to make decisions that are student-centered and have you all in mind. Lastly, I have to thank my support team. I've been able to serve on this board because of the support of my Christian County Public School family, my superintendent, Mr. Chris Benzell, and Ms. Penny Knight, Principal of Gateway Academy. Both have been instrumental in growing me as an educator. If it wasn't for my CCPS family, I wouldn't be sitting here today. Each and every leader that I have worked for and the teachers that I have worked with have invested so much to help me realize that I can step out of my little corner in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, to make a difference for our public education system in our state. Thank you, CCPS, for changing me for good. A huge thank you to my parents, particularly my dad. Sorry, I'm David Couch. I have watched my father serve the teachers, students, in public schools of Kentucky for more than 30 years. A huge reason why I became an educator was because I saw my dad's impact, thank you, in our public school system. It has been an honor to serve on this board in his last year here at KDE, and I know that his innovations in education technology in Kentucky will be felt for many, many years to come. Lastly, to my biggest cheerleaders, my husband Joe and our son Aiden. Both of them always support my crazy ideas and big dreams. They both support my, or, excuse me, they sat on the front row during my first meeting on the board, and they continue to have a front row seat to everything that I have done cheering me along the way. In closing, thank you for this opportunity, this privilege, this honor. Patrice McQuary told me the first time that we met that being on the Kentucky Board of Education is the pinnacle, and I wholeheartedly agree. There will not be many professional opportunities that top this one, and this has been an experience that I will never forget. To this board, the incredible staff at KDE, and to all the individuals that make up the fabric of public education in Kentucky, I leave you with the parting words of Elphaba. Let me say this before we part: So much of me is made of what I learned from you. You'll be with me like a handprint on my heart. So thank you.
So Alyssa, you are keeping up a tradition of there will be tears. We've not parted with the teacher and student representative on this board a single year since we've had them without the tears that are an expression of real sincere gratitude and appreciation for the service, because we know it does not come without its own challenges and costs to you personally. The preparation you have to make to be away from the classroom, and you express the appreciation of your colleagues for supporting your service here, we appreciate their efforts as well. You have been a source of affirmation for me. There are so many times, Alyssa, when I look over to see what is on your face, because you should not play poker, as a way of knowing, are we on the right track? And it has been so reassuring to have, I call them the real practitioners at the table, because, you know, one thing I think you can count on a true professional practitioner for is the truth. And to have that source of affirmation that we are, we're in the range of truthfulness to the things that we value, being, I have appreciated that from you. Thank you so much. And, you know, we don't say goodbye easily. We are, we'll be staying in touch. Other board members, please. Patrice, I know that you have developed a special relationship.
I'm going to miss you, but we can stay in touch.
But we'll, we can stay in touch. The comment that you made about the expertise on this board and not feeling at the level of the expertise on this board, I want you to fully understand something. The 40,000-plus odd teachers, and I think I can speak for the board on this level across the Commonwealth are our heroes. You're one of our heroes. So never think yourself any less than anyone else because you're a true hero. Thank you for your service with us.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the courage it takes to make a presentation like that, especially when, I mean, I don't know if you knew, but, you know, since we've been anticipating your dad's retirement from the just legendary contribution that he's made to Kentucky.
We're just happy you look so much like your mom.
Holly?
Thank you for representing the western part of the state so well. You always make me proud to be from western Kentucky. And I, I just, I've, I've really enjoyed working with you. And this year seems to go faster. It's just, it feels too soon. And I'm gonna miss you. And thank you for bringing your, your brain and your, and your heart and your courage to, yes, to, to our, to our group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Alyssa, your predecessor, Joanne, just had a baby.
I know, I know. No, that's not true.
She's like, I'm good.
Well, as I said, I, or intimated, RJ could not be here. He is on the baseball field in the midst of the tournament season. And so we want to acknowledge his contribution as well. He is in the playoffs, but he says, "Thank you to the Kentucky Board of Education for allowing me to serve with them for the 2023-24 school year. Although there were several transitions during the year, the commitment of the board in keeping the students of Kentucky first was obvious. This experience has taught me much about establishing a vision and aligning policies to make that vision a reality. It was also, it has also been enlightening to see the widely varied roles of people working throughout the state to ensure that each Kentucky student has the opportunity to succeed. I'm extremely proud to have been a small part of this important work." RJ Osborne. So we will be getting in touch with RJ to let him know that we miss him and will always hope that he's on a winning team and, and with the winning spirit. Very, very impressive young man.
Sarah Robinson?
Yes.
I think we should thank his, his parents, too. His mom was with him.
Oh, indeed.
Transporting him back and forth, and she was always at the meetings. Which goes to show.
Yeah.
Takes a whole village.
We've experienced that with our, with our students because parents have really put in a lot of time and effort to support their participation. Thank you so much. Well, we've had a very productive meeting. And now we have a very special opportunity. We are going to attend a showcase of student defenses of learning. Representatives from the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support will now provide instructions for this event. But first, we need a motion to adjourn. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Thank you. Six or a second, thank you. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Well, then, we are adjourned.